Call to order the Lake Mills City Council meeting for March 17th, 2020. And roll call, please.
Mr. Foster.
Here.
Ms. Frich.
Here.
Ms. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Fields.
Here.
And Mr. Frich previously informed staff that he would be unavailable this evening.
We'll then move on to item number three, the Pledge of Allegiance. All who are able, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to thank everyone who came tonight and everyone who's watching at home or by computer. Takes us to item number four, correction and/or approval of the Lake Mills City Council minutes of March 3rd, 2020.
Council and Frich, there's amendment to the agenda. Item four has been changed.
Oh, item four. Hold on, got to find it. Oh, it's got to be off of the computer.
Yep.
That's it. I was using the other one. Thank you for catching that. Okay, going backwards to our new item for Declaration of Emergency and Proclamation Granting Emergency Powers to the City Manager. Okay, I guess we'll turn that over to the City Manager to talk to us.
I think we'll let Dan talk about it.
Oh, we're going to let the boy. This is just the bouncing ball of the City Council tonight.
What's that?
Bouncing ball of the City Council.
I'm going to stand up here so I have a mic. Dan Drescher, City Attorney. So, we're in pretty unforeseen and novel circumstances here with the coronavirus. Jefferson County, the state of Wisconsin, the federal government have all just declared a national and local and state emergencies. For a number of reasons, the city of Lake Mills is contemplating following suit. And the Resolution 2011 in front of you is both a declaration of a public state of emergency in the city of Lake Mills, specifically regarding the coronavirus COVID-19, as well as a proclamation by the city government, by the City Council, that grants emergency powers to the City Manager in the event that the City Council is unable to manage their authority, to engage in their role. I guess the first step I'd like to do is actually read the resolution. Perhaps then we can have a motion and we can comment on it, make changes that are necessary, and proceed. Does that sound good?
Can we get a motion for Resolution 2011?
I move adoption of Resolution 2011.
Second.
And I have a second. You may proceed.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2011, Declaration of Public State of Emergency for the City of Lake Mills issued by the City Council in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, and proclamation granting emergency powers to City Manager. Whereas, a novel strain of the coronavirus named COVID-19 has spread throughout numerous countries, including the United States, and whereas, the World Health Organization has declared a public health emergency of international concern, and whereas, the United States Department of Health and Human Services has declared a public health emergency, and whereas, the state of Wisconsin has declared a public health emergency, and whereas, the conditions created by the proclamation of these public health emergencies pose a continuing and substantial threat to public order, life, health, and safety of the citizens of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, and whereas, the city of Lake Mills in cooperation with the local, state, and federal governmental entities desires to take action to prevent exposure to and the spread of the COVID-19 coronavirus, and whereas, due to the emergency conditions, the City Council at its regular meeting on March 17th, 2020 cannot fully address the emerging issues and anticipates inability to conduct meetings during the term of the ongoing emergency. And whereas, in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 323.14 Sub 4B, due to the emergency conditions, if the governing body of the local unit of government is unable to meet promptly, the City Manager shall exercise by proclamation all of the powers conferred upon the governing body under Wisconsin Statute 323.14 Sub 4A or Wisconsin Statute 323.11 that appear necessary and expedient. And whereas, in accordance with Chapter 64-1 of the City of Lake Mills Municipal Code, the city of Lake Mills has adopted an emergency management plan, and the City Manager is appointed as the Director of Emergency Management Services. And whereas, in accordance with Section 64-1 of the City of Lake Mills Municipal Code, the City Manager has all of the power and duties established under Wisconsin Statute 323.15 Sub 4 and Wisconsin Statute 323.11. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 323.11, does hereby declare a public state of emergency that poses a continuing threat to public order, life, health, and safety of the citizens of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, and does proclaim as follows. In accordance with Wisconsin Statutes 323.11 and Wisconsin Statutes 323.14 Sub 4, the City Council hereby grants the City Manager, for the city of Lake Mills, all powers held by the governing body, including those necessary and expedient for the health, safety, protection, and welfare of persons and properties within the city of Lake Mills. The City Manager for the city of Lake Mills is hereby authorized and directed, working with federal, state, and other local authorities, to take all reasonable and necessary steps to prevent exposure and/or the spread of the COVID-19 coronavirus within the city of Lake Mills, including but not limited to those duties specified within Chapter 64 of the City of Lake Mills Municipal Code and Chapter 323 of Wisconsin Statutes. In addition to the emergency powers enumerated above, if the council is unable to meet, the City Manager is hereby authorized and directed to take such actions as may be necessary and expedient to continue regular operations of the city of Lake Mills, including authorizing purchases and accepting bids which would otherwise require approval of council, so long as such purchases or bids meet all statutory and local code requirements, approving register of payments for invoices, payroll, and other payments, authorizing temporary budget adjustments and transfers, authorizing the closure of municipal buildings and facilities to the public. Any actions taken under this authorization shall be presented to the City Council for ratification as soon as practicable. The initial period for this emergency is declared through April 21st, 2020, and may be extended by the council. Resolved this 17th day of March, 2020.
Thank you for reading it, Dan.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Discussion by the council or by Steve?
So, what are we going to consider the timeframe as far as unable to meet? Is that defined?
Our inability to meet is lack of a quorum. There are special exceptions that are being, special accommodations, let's say, that are being proffered by the state, that we discussed a little bit in the work session prior to this regarding open meeting laws, digital appearances, telephonic appearances, et cetera. The important thing is that a quorum needs to be presented. From previous discussions with council persons, I'm not sure how available a quorum will be in the next couple of meetings. Mr. Frich is out tonight. Ms. Schmidt has...
It has nothing to do with...
He is not here tonight, though. That's my only point there.
Right.
I understand it has nothing to do with this particular strain.
Right.
Ms. Schmidt has expressed concern about what's going on. So, if there is no ability to have a meeting, then the powers that are dictated in this document would pass on to the City Manager. That's really the best answer. Declaring an emergency, a declaration of emergency situation right now is only prudent. The proclamation regarding the authority and powers of the City Manager are a little bit more, if we need them, this document will have them in place, meaning if boards and commissions cannot meet, and there's something that occurs in the future, as this is novel and basically a brand-new experience that's developing, we are prepared to address normal business concerns that arise.
Mike, the way this works is that, let's say tomorrow I make like 10 or 12 decisions, we're not going to call a council meeting tomorrow night. We're going to probably let them roll to the next council meeting unless we determine that there's something that's really significant where we need another council meeting.
Yeah, and that's what I'm getting to. How far-reaching can this be without getting us back together and then presenting it to us? And then what of our courses of action if actions are taken on our behalf that we don't agree with once it's brought back to us?
Statutorily, the governing body that gives the authority or the power to the City Manager, the CEO, the acting executive at that point, all of the decisions that are, all of the actions that are taken by that administrative officer must be ratified at the very first opportunity to do so. So, the very first meeting that you all do hold would be the appropriate time for ratification.
No, I get that. And what I'm asking is if you come for the ratification, we look at it and we say, hey, whoa, this is not right. You should not have spent $100,000 on laptops to get everybody out to VPN. What is our course of action?
You can certainly disapprove action, whether or not you can...
But it's already taking place.
Yeah, I know. That's times that we're in. So, certain things you could actually stop, certainly money that's expended in an appropriate fashion, and adjustments to the budget, those might be more difficult to rewind.
The way I listen to this is that these powers go to the City Manager if we're unable to act, not if we're still in, able to act.
Right, so every effort should be made to pull us together before actions are taken.
100% agree.
So, that's what I was getting to. What's the timeframe that, are we going to...
Your next council meeting is scheduled for April 7th.
Got that.
The following meeting is scheduled for April 21st.
Yep, nope, I got that. I understand that. But what if a decision has to be made tomorrow about something? And what is the timeframe for you to get us together for an emergency meeting before the city administrator just makes that decision?
I suppose...
One hour, two hours, three hours?
You could give us direction on what an appropriate timeframe there is. I don't necessarily think that that's what's contemplated by this action. It is normal course of business. In statute, the acting authority is given all of the governing body's duties and powers to engage in actions that are consistent with the policies and the programs that are put in place by the governing body. So, I wouldn't expect that there's far-reaching action that is taken at first, but then there is no contemplation. This document is created because we're contemplating a potential difficulty in the future of having meetings, of making quorums. If there is an ability to make a quorum, to have an open meeting, then that is absolutely the manner in which the government should act.
The fastest you can call is 24 hours.
No, in an emergency, you do two hours.
Two hours.
Two hours?
Yep.
No less than two hours.
Yep.
And the statute only gives the powers to the City Manager, which he's always had the emergency powers. It's just that this would declare and basically activate them.
Correct.
And he's only allowed to do that if, do actions that are necessary and expedient. Yeah, we could later on say that wasn't necessary, or that wasn't expedient, and the City Manager certainly know that we could exercise our powers to discipline him as a result of him taking an action that's not expedient or necessary, and we could have those arguments later, but, you know, we're in a very fast-acting environment right now. We don't know from one day to the next what's coming down the pike, and, you know, one of us could be exposed, two of us could be exposed, we could be quarantined. We don't know if there's going to be quorum capabilities available to us, and then what do we do if we haven't authorized him to act in our place?
And we also have our computers and our telephones, that if there is something, he can, in my case, I've asked him to call me because I'm more handy with my phone, but, you know, for some of you, you live with your computer, and he could easily email us and say, I'm going to need to do this, so that, you know, Mike, for instance, you get it and you go, whoa, 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 whoa. You know, you shoot back, and you've done that before. And I have done it in my way, too, so I think just the fact that we might not have a quorum and might not have a meeting doesn't mean we might not let him know what we think. And if he gets a very clear message that he doesn't have the backing of the council, I don't think he's going to do it over our dead bodies.
Yeah.
And that's, yeah, and that's why I brought up...
Do you feel that that's an open meetings violation?
That's a potential walking quorum, the way that you defined it.
If we're communicating...
To me?
If we're communicating back and forth between us and you, that's okay.
Rather than communicating.
But if we're communicating and we're all in on all of the emails, that might not work. I defer to Dan over...
No, you have a good understanding of it.
But we're getting, you know, help from the league now for setting up, like we talked earlier, about being able to do remote meetings, and that would be great if we could do that. Even if we're quarantined, we'd be able to do a remote meeting.
And my concern on that issue, and this is developing with the league, there are ideas out there, I don't think it's as cut as dry. I mean, there is a number of opinions from a number of different attorneys involved in that conversation, and really, the ability for the public to be involved in that process is at the crux of the open meetings law, and I'm not sure that we're set up at this point to accommodate the public in that manner. I'm not saying that it's impossible. I think that this is drastic times where, you know, you have to take reasonable steps, and reasonable steps in certain circumstances are not the same reasonable steps in other circumstances. So, we're going to work through that issue. I don't believe that we have that nailed set at all.
And, you know, I'm not against any of the stuff that's in here. I think it's a good way to make sure we're covered, but that's what I want to make sure we're covered in that...
And I very much understand your concern, specifically the checks and balances aspect of it.
Yep.
That you need it, and the way the stat, and that's why, I mean, this entire document is really just restating the statutes over and over again, and the reason that is, is because the statutes are the only guidance that we have, and I'm frankly impressed with the breadth, with how broad the authority that's passed from the governing body to one individual in emergency circumstances can be. But that is the reason that the statute specifically says ratification at the first opportunity thereafter.
Yeah.
And that's, that is the protection.
Yeah, I just, I don't want him to get in trouble for doing something that could potentially be against what we would have thought of. That's one of my big concerns, and then I don't want stuff spent if there's other ways of doing it, and that's, that's the reason I'm bringing those...
For whatever reason.
Right, yeah. You know...
We could say, wait, this is Lake Mills, not Madison.
Yeah.
We don't need that.
Yeah.
If this is moving so fast, would it make sense for us to meet the next four Tuesdays in a row instead of having a three-week gap in here? I mean, if this is so fluid and we need to be making decisions on a regular basis, why don't we meet on a regular basis?
The...
It could be a very short meeting.
There is a fifth...
Or is it posted in advance?
There is a fifth Tuesday in the month of March. Next Tuesday is currently scheduled with a completely full day of hearings, basically, with the Plan Commission, with the Joint Review Board prior to that. I'm not against that idea whatsoever. I was hesitant to request a special meeting later this week because of the concerns that I've been presented with. But that's absolutely your decision. That is not my decision to make whatsoever.
And it might be that you're still not going to have a quorum. We're supposed to be acting responsibly, and, you know, there's a risk. Yes, there haven't been documented cases in Jefferson County yet, but there's a risk just by all of us sitting here and coming and going through the building.
I don't see, right now, I don't see that much of an issue of something that's really time-sensitive. It'd be different if we had an issue on the table that, you know, we know is happening, but I think we can go with the way we are, and if, call it only if necessary.
It's not like we've got a brand-new City Manager who we don't have experience with. He's been here since 2000. I don't...
It's not a matter of trust, it's just making sure that...
Right.
He doesn't get in trouble with the powers. Not that you would, but it's just...
Well, and it's part of our job to make sure we do our job. I mean, it's more of that than anything.
It is.
I, you know, so, I don't have a problem with this resolution, given, given the discussion we just had, and the fact that we make it clear that, you know, if there's something very controversial, I'd expect to hear about it, not after it's done, but before it happens.
Yeah, and I don't see anything wrong with Steve contacting the council president before he makes some decision. It doesn't have to be all of us, but if he has the power granted to him, he's just notifying the council president, I'm doing this.
He could send an email to all of us.
He could do that, too.
Yeah, that's what I would do. I wouldn't do one, I would do all. I called my end because...
Yeah, we just have to be careful.
Because I've asked him to...
Yeah, I'm going to notify all of you. There are situations that are going to dictate immediate responses coming up, and I don't think that that's...
For instance, if something did happen and we did have to close City Hall, we should all be notified that that's happening.
Yes.
Maybe we'll be very fortunate, and it'll never have to happen.
I think, I think everybody should be notified that City Hall is being closed.
Well, that's true, but I'm just saying, that would be one thing.
Right.
Just as an example, if for some reason, then what does, you know, and if it happens on the day of the election, then it would affect it. That's a whole nother, yeah. So, let's hope we don't have to do these things.
I don't think I could close it on the election day. I'm overruled on that one.
Whatever.
The governor and the...
But I do see a lot of things, like you said, coming up that could very well make use of this because of the stuff moving so fast, you know, just today, the addition of Illinois, so if anybody travels to Illinois there, and when they come back, they're supposed to self-quarantine for 14 days, you know, that's stuff that you could make something about the city workers, say, you know, if you're going, or you go there.
Technically, I don't even really need to have this resolution to do that.
No, but it, it would cover you, because we would do the same thing, just say...
It just, yeah, I, I've been involved in a lot of debates already this week on whether the, seeing as the governor's done it and the county's done it, does the city really need to do it? We felt comfortable with having, asking the city to do it, just so you knew what was going on. There are certain things, you know, like, Dan and I had a conversation, if it goes to Florida, you were going to work from home for 14 days. So, or you can come in after hours, but you're not, you're not working with the rest of us if you're going to a place like Florida, or California, or Washington, not Illinois.
Yeah, or maybe money frees up from wherever that we can add to our emergency operation center, you know, stuff like that, that, that quick shot that you'd need to act quick on.
Yeah, and we've already been, you know, we've made a lot of responses to taking action, and we've been instructing them to keep record of it so that we can get reimbursed from FEMA. So, we, we're trying to follow those lines, and we're trying to look at what's going on, you know. There were the sick leave policy from the mayor in Water, or in Madison today. Those are the types of issues that are going to come down, and...
Those are things you'd manage anyway.
Well...
Until a budget amendment's necessary.
Until a budget amendment is necessary, and in that case, it may not be necessary because we would have paid them if they were at work or not.
Right.
So, and if we're shutting them down for some reason, and it's our responsibility, there are some other ones that we debated this morning. If a firefighter or an election worker who's in volunteering, getting paid on that type of contracts, coronavirus, while they're working, is out of workman's comp. And there are all these types of new issues that are coming forward that we've never had to deal with. Every one of the department heads has emailed a ton of messages and ideas to me about what we need to do and how we need to do it, and we're trying to wade through those and see what happens, and who knows what our insurance company's going to do? Who knows what the state's going to do? And then how are we going to respond?
So, yeah, basically, what this does is this does actually declare a state of emergency inside of Lake Mills.
Yep.
That's what we're doing.
So, you know that, that there's a condition here, that we're taking extreme actions?
Yep.
And, you know, if it needs...
Be aware of it.
If it becomes an issue that I, that we hit, I'm sure that we'll all discuss it and make sure that you guys know of it, just like all the rest of us do.
But in case you can't...
And generally, if we, if it's that big, now, the VPN one and the laptops, that one will be just to the council, but, you know, if we shut down City Hall, that's going on, will be on Facebook.
Yeah.
And the newspaper, and the websites, and, and those types of things, so you may know about it a couple minutes ahead of time.
What's the chain of command if you get hit with it?
Betsy.
Okay.
She's next, and then I think it's Dan.
Okay. I just wanted to know, in case. I think everybody should be clear on what that is. Unfortunately, you aren't totally guaranteed not to get it.
Yes, no, I've, we've thought about that.
Is there any talk about opening, even on a limited basis, EOC centers, as far as county or city or...
Not in the county or city yet. We have discussed, you know, what type of operations there would be and how we'd have to handle that. We have not moved to that level yet. Obviously, if we started to have people that started to have it in Jefferson County, we might ramp up. We would probably get some kind of notice from Donna, the emergency manager for Jefferson County. Then we would have to debate whether we're going there or we're staying here, and what kind of cooperation they were looking for and those types of things. So, it, like I said, it, it remains rather fluid, but at this point in time, I haven't seen any need. We haven't experienced any super extracurricular, other than a couple items where we are keeping track of our extra costs.
Yeah, the state's opened theirs up already, but I don't know, there's probably a couple counties that have, but that's about it.
I think Fond du Lac and...
Waukesha may, might have.
Yeah.
I want to thank, I just want to thank staff for bringing this to us and doing what you needed to do to get it on the agenda and the two-hour limit that we had, and go ahead.
So, I just want to make sure that if something does happen to you and you have these, are these transferable down, or do we have to do this again?
No, I believe that it transfers to the, it does mention acting in the statute, yes.
Okay.
So, we would just move to Betty or to Dan?
Yeah.
Not Betty, Betsy.
You did fix...
Yeah, so, I, the one that you guys have digitally is not the same one that is in front of you in paper form. I had a couple of different people look at it, and they corrected some Scrivener's errors.
Okay, all right.
I did my best in my reading to relate those Scrivener's errors.
Yeah, and I was just reading the statutes, and there's really nothing in there that makes me...
It's incredibly broad, and I, I question the league attorneys and the other attorneys on conference calls about, you know, what is the constraint here, and really, there's, there's not an answer to that. It's incredibly broad in the event that the governing body is not available to meet, is not available to make decisions. If the governing body is not available, then the authority for those, those powers goes specifically to the chief executive, which is the City Manager. I mean, it's an appropriate move, but you're right, it's incredibly broad.
Yeah, and I might be a little bit more sensitive to that, only because we had the prior experience when we were unable to act. It wasn't an emergency, it was self-inflicted. When we had different council members who had conflicted themselves out, and we needed to make decisions, and we only had two members, and you need three to get a vote. And it, it really hamstrung the government, um, in many situations. And so, you know, and it was just this thing that would never, ever happen again, but it wasn't an emergency. But, um, trying to work around, well, we can't get a decision about this, and we can't get a decision about that, because we have to have three members vote, and we only have two available. It can really be a, a difficult thing. And so, we need to have something, because we might not have that opportunity to get us all together.
And let's hope we never need to use this for a solution. But, it's better to have it and not use it than to not have it and need it. I'm good with it. Should we call the question? Call the roll, please. Hi. Hi.
Hi. Hi. A state of emergency has been declared.
Yeah. On our watch, too, darn. Okay. Moving then to item number five. Now we do the corrections, or did we do it before?
No.
No, okay, good. Corrections and/or approval of the city council minutes of the March 3rd, 2020 meeting.
The adoption of the council minutes of March 3rd, 2020 is written. Second.
Any additions or corrections at this time? Seeing none. Call the roll. Hi.
Hi. Bye.
Hi. Okay. Moving to item six, correspondence. Anybody have some they would like to share with the council? I have to get back into my, where I belong. Um, we've had quite a few emails in the last few days. Uh, the senior citizens center is closed, library is closed, and both of those came as correspondence.
I don't remember much else. I don't remember much else.
No, I don't remember.
I believe we had a citizen that was, um, suggesting that we not have the public hearing on the tid number eight.
And I did get, um, a couple calls after the newspaper came out, where people thought the council had acted on the, um, rendering in the paper. And I said, what rendering? Because I hadn't even gotten my paper yet. So, uh, reassured those people that, no, there's nothing even on the table for the city council at this time. And, uh, I certainly would've appreciated that, not having been printed and making everybody upset, but that's free press in America, so.
It was in the public document that was posted as part of the public hearing for the plan commission, so.
That's where it came from?
Yes.
But I hadn't even seen it when the phone calls came, because I didn't have my paper yet. So, I mean, I, I told them, and I said, I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah. No, it was in the tid plan, it's not in the, it's not in the corp. And to tell you the truth, I was surprised that it was in there, too. I know that we had looked at it internally, but it was like, there's nothing that makes it a tid, part of the tid document, why would, why would you include that in there? But it, you know, there were, there were things included in the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan that were, you know, I didn't have anything to do with that either. That was Parks Board in the.
Yeah.
So when it showed up, I was, when people were asking me about it, I was like, oh, okay, let me check.
But, you know, just to reassure people that, no, the council has not gone off on their little horse and ridden into the sunset. So, uh, anything else that was a correspondence item for anybody? Okay. Moving then to questions and public comment. And if I can find my little duty thing here. Uh, the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law encourage, discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes, and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium. So anyone in the office, in the office, in the audience who would like to speak to us at this time may go to the podium. Thank you for coming.
Hi there.
Hi.
Do I sign first, or do I?
No, you could do that at the end.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Mary Doyle. I'm a resident of Lake Mills for 35 years, and I live at 325 East Washington Street. I pay property taxes on four properties in Lake Mills. Considering the topic that we just finished with the COVID virus, my, I feel now my concerns don't rise to that level. So, with that in mind, please hear me out on a couple of topics I wanna comment on, and if you can answer some questions, great. Number one, uh, we've requested, we, meaning Pat and I, have requested pedestrian signs at Doyle's Dogs. We were told we first had to have pedestrian crosswalks. Crosswalks took three years, we do have them now. We have been waiting for two years for the pedestrian crossing signs. Um, we are looking out for the safety of the children especially. Uh, we, some of us are familiar with the tragedy on Mulberry Street. I just wanna know, when can we expect those pedestrian signs to be put up? My second topic, um, again, doesn't rise to the level of the, the virus. Uh, the bubbler on Main Street, Main and Lake Street was repaired in 2019. And I happen to have a business on that corner, so I'm very familiar with it, saw it, used a lot once it was repaired. In 2019, it was removed when, uh, it was street construction. And I'm just wondering if there's any plan for that bubbler to be put back? My perspective, my opinion is it's something that adds to the charm of our downtown Lake Mills. And it'd be nice if, you know, we had it there once before, is that something possible to put back?
You probably can't put it back till we're done with the coronavirus.
Well, that's, exactly. Like I said, I know that this doesn't rise to the level, and you know, my concerns were prior to all this other uprising.
But it's a good point, and I don't know, we'll.
Right, I, I understand.
Okay.
Um, and then if you could just clarify for me, um, so next, next week's meetings on Monday and Tuesday, are they taking place amidst the change in protocol for considering, you know, all that's going on? So are we, is there a meeting or not? I just want a clarification.
Uh, and my clarification is, I don't know.
We don't know yet.
We don't know where we stand on that.
Okay.
I'm gonna try and hold the one on Monday, no matter what.
On Monday.
Tuesday, we may cancel.
Okay.
Uh, we, or we may delay. So, but.
As you know, there is a lot of activity on that.
You asked the question, let's be specific. Tid number eight would be the question?
Correct.
Okay, because we're gonna hold the plan commission meeting, and we're, and we're gonna deal with tid number five. Tid number eight, I, I'm gonna ask the planner what the timeline issues are, and some of the cost issues are, and there, there's not as much of a, a driving force behind that as you may have heard earlier. So, um, we may cancel or delay that one.
The, the Tuesday meeting?
The Tuesday meeting.
Okay.
Which is the public hearing where they would act on it.
Yes, yes.
So, the plan commission would act on it, would still have to go to city council after that. So there, there, and there are statutory requirements for the number of days from the notice to the hearings to the council meeting. And then from the start of the project to the end of the project, you have a certain number of days. So if you don't do that in that time period, you have to start all over with. So, that, that would be the consideration that we'd look at. How much time do we have to delay it? Or if we do cancel it, what's it gonna cause us to start over, and what are the timelines? But since there's no project, it's not as big of a deal, other than the cost.
And one last, um, with that meeting on Monday at 5:00 PM, that is sometimes a challenging time for a lot of people to attend a meeting that work, or, you know, families getting ready for dinner. So I just wanna make that point, that 5:00 PM for the community input, that's not the most convenient. I'm sure there's more behind it than I know, but I'm just stating that.
Okay. The, the meeting Monday night is a question and answer time.
Right.
It's not community input, which would be the, the Tuesday night meeting. And, like I said, um, I'm, we start at 5:00. If you can't show up until 7:00, I'll stay. So that if you need to ask questions of me, I can answer them. If you wanna, we'll record the meeting. If you wanna send, um, emails to me asking questions, I will answer them during the meeting. And then you can watch it recorded online or on cable TV, so that you can get a good idea of what the, the ideas are.
Okay.
Mine are more along the lines of, you know, all the technical issues, and, because I don't vote, I don't, so, any public hearing to me doesn't do any good. So this is just, we're gonna kinda sit down in a room like this, kinda, and I'm gonna probably sit here, and they'll just shoot questions at me, and I'll say, hey, okay, this is what happened, there, this is what the ideas are, these are how we process these. So, um.
And again, we don't, is that meeting happening on Monday?
Yes, that meeting will happen on Monday.
That meeting will happen, okay.
Tuesday is the one where.
Tuesday is the one in question.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Sure.
If there's anyone else who would like to address the council at this time, you can come on up.
Dave Larsoul, Lake Mills, EMI. Service Director. Basically, I'm just here to reiterate what Steve has already, uh, mentioned before. Or Steve Wilkie, that is. I am basically here tonight to just, uh, review some of the things that could possibly be happening that we may need to at least look at or consider, uh, combining services on this. I understand that there's already been a proposal put out with, uh, two other agencies. But, um, in order to take care of our community, we know people are gonna be quarantined for 14 days. With our ambulance service currently, the way that it is, uh, going during the day, we will have issues, probably in another two or three weeks, if this goes through the way that they're predicting it. I've met with the state a couple times, they're talking that you're gonna lose an average of probably a quarter to a half of your staff if you're in the, uh, healthcare field, so just plan on that. So, basically, I'm just here to say, hey, if there is some way to maybe combine services down the road, it is something that can be done according to the state. We would be able to basically, uh, more or less cross-credentialed the fire department with us, so that they would still be able to respond on the ambulance, and continue to take care of the community. And that's basically what, what I'm looking for tonight. So, I don't know if there's any questions, but I just wanted to reiterate that, since uh, Steve has talked about it already. I think that, no matter what, at some point, we are going to run down on people if we end up having to quarantine. It, it's just a fact. I don't know what other easier way to say it. So, um, any questions, anybody?
Um, Steve, do you have any questions?
No, I, I have a pretty good idea what the conversation is.
I kinda figured that.
Obviously, most of our people are volunteers, uh, for the fire department, so we don't require them to respond, and they may opt not to. The debate is, and, and we would do everything we can to make sure that we have a response, particularly during the day. The thing that we wanna make sure of is, is that we have personal protective equipment. Uh, we're not gonna have the police department respond unless it's under very specific types of conditions, because generally, they aren't medically trained, and they don't do, so that, I don't know that there's an advantage having them there unless there's some real type of circumstance that is beyond most control. But, the fire department does have those types of people, as long as we have the personal protective equipment in place, I think we would feel comfortable responding. We've basically already hammered out a pretty comprehensive agreement where we're going to respond to all, all second calls in the city, all pulseless non-breathers, all accidents, so. It, it, our kind of response to that was, until we actually have the, you know, Dave has most of the personal protective equipment for his people, and he knows that it's hard to get a hold of it. And, so if we don't have it, because we've never done it before, we don't have it on hand, or not a lot of it, um, we're not gonna do any responses unless we can get access to that. So if Dave, you can help us with that, we'd appreciate that. We obviously are working through the channels, because as I understand, and Todd can correct me if I'm wrong, but they're requiring each agency now to make their own requests.
Yes, they are.
So, but if you could do anything to help that along, or, you know, if you can't get enough people, and you already have all that personal protective equipment, and then you're distributing it to us at that time, um, I'm sure that we would, we would be willing to help. Now, you know, the, there's still the conversation about how many in the ambulance as it leaves town, and, and how that impacts us. So, we're gonna have to take a hard look at that, but I, you know, if it's an emergency, we'll be there.
If you'd be kind enough to sign in on the sheet, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time, on any topic that's on the agenda? We did not have anyone who wanted to speak on anything off the agenda tonight, did we? Nobody came to you before the meeting?
Um, just the Doyles.
Okay.
Let me know that they would be here speaking.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Then, closing questions and public comment to move to item eight, the city manager's report.
I don't believe there's anything attached to it, but I do wanna bring up some things. I sent you an email, uh, from Cheryl Halsley, who was the DNR representative, who notified us that we received a $485,000 state, or federal grant, uh, from the sport and fishing department.
They did say tentative, so what, what things do we?
We have to sign a contract that says we're gonna take care of a certain number of things. So, we received a $465,000 firm commitment from the recreational boating grant, which is DNR, with the possibility in April of that going to 485, depending on how many additional grants come in under another project. At this point in time, it looks like we're going to get that additional 20,000. That being said, um, the last phase of the archaeological is $283,000. But it just happens to be that the additional money that we got to cover the project from the feds, that we didn't anticipate, because we only anticipated them giving us about 250,000, will cover the cost of the archaeological.
Oh, nice.
So that will be on your next agenda for approval, is to approve that, that report. So that will be on your next agenda for approval, is to approve that, that report, that project.
That's the recovery in the third phase.
Yes. Yeah. I...
Nice.
I don't ever remember, ever, seeing a $283,000 Phase Three report. That shocked me. I'm pretty sure it shocked Brandon and Duane. But it's, it's a pretty elaborate project, and they do cover a lot of areas. So you get to look at it next week if you want Rick Edwards or Robert Watson to be here to talk about it, but it will be on your next agenda.
Great. Okay.
Also in there, they stated $75,000 for shared bills or invoices? Is that on top of the?
That was pre, that was pre-award. So you know, if we had design work or archaeological work, we could use that $75,000 for that. But the way, and I'm going to, the way I'm going to explain this is, is the project is $970,000 roughly. Half of it's covered by the DNR through the boat, recreational boat, and the other half is covered by the sports fishing grant. We had originally thought that the sport fishing grant might only be $250,000. So we budgeted that additional money ourselves to cover that. So now that they're covering 100% of it, it actually leaves us with additional money that we could put into the historical work or the archaeological work. A little bit of a surprise, I was wondering, you know, originally, we thought, well, we'll just take it out of fund balance, it's not a big deal, and we're out of the council contingency because, you know, but then when it came in, it was like, whoa. So when this grant notice came in, it was like, phew.
Well, that's good to hear. I think it'll be an asset to the, to the site.
Should be one incredible report.
By the way, South Main has started.
It has started. I think they've caused us to experience several glitches. First of all, they weren't supposed to start Monday, they did.
They said they'd start today.
Yes.
And they started yesterday.
Yesterday.
Wait a minute.
They did some closures and some other things that surprised people. I think that they have had an unusually large amount of traffic driving through, some very close calls. I think they were worried about one ambulance call today. But I, they haven't done a good job of noticing this yet, so we need to get ahold of them. Duane and Dave and Brian and Alyssa are meeting tomorrow, and then they're going to try and put together a plan and work with the DOT guys to get something up that does a little bit better job. We're also going to talk to the chief of police about maybe at the appropriate time, which is to put some more enforcement down in the area for a while. The, their original report, I know, I know Diane, you were at the...
I was there and heard it.
That the public information meeting was, is that they wouldn't start today, they would do some preliminary work, and they would really ramp up next Monday. Well, no, they really ramped up this Monday.
Which surprised me.
Which caught us all a little off guard. So we're, we're going to have to...
Right hand didn't know what the left hand was saying, I think.
Well, we went based off of what occurred at the one meeting, and I think, you know what Jeremy said, and now what's going on with Chad and Grant, they didn't necessarily get fully communicated. Cody was ready to go, and so you know how Cody is, he's digging. He wants to be out of here on, on the date that he's supposed to be out of here.
Well, it was just a, a gift, though, that was one place where having no school Monday and Tuesday actually helped, because we had that bus situation too for the two schools.
Right.
Which didn't exist because we didn't have schools, so that whole issue dropped right off. Otherwise, we would have had that issue on top of it, yes, too.
Yep.
All right. Last time, you had a really big list for us, so this time, we keep doing all the other stuff for the virus today, so kept you busy with that. Sounds right?
Well, if you were at the Department of the Meeting, we had a, a very, very long meeting with a very, very long agenda, but I try not to delay the meeting as much as I can. I try and concentrate on one meeting and do it that way. I just thought that this item here was important, because it'll be on your next agenda.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Item number nine, acceptance of minutes of the zoning board of appeals on, of April, ah, April, where am I? Of January 8th, 2020, and the Public Works Board of February 11th, 2020, and they will be placed on file. That takes us to item number 10, council business. First item of business, A, board and committee appointments, two appointments, one for the library board. I'd like to appoint Kristi Went. She was selected by the library board, and I concur with their selection. And if we could get a motion to approve that appointment, I'd appreciate that. I approve the appointment of Kristi Went for library board.
Second.
And would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Rich?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
And then upon recommendation from the Joint Rock Lake Committee, would like to appoint Susan, now I'm not sure on this pronunciation, is Nessman? Nessman?
I believe that's Neesman.
Oh, Neesman, okay. I'm not very good on names. And would like to place her name in for appointment to the Joint Rock Lake Committee.
So move.
Second.
And would you call the roll on that, please?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Rich?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay. Good, thank you very much. Item B, discussion decision on the Prime Pyramid Event Venue LLC Class B Beer and Class B License Application. Would you read that for us?
City Council Motion 20-3-2-1, authorizing the granting of Class B liquor and Class B beer licenses to Pyramid Event Venue LLC 117 South Main Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, and appointing Elias Whedle as agent.
And this is Eli Whedle, and this is for the Farmer Pizza, Anna Maria's Pizza? I got it right?
No.
No.
It was Anna Maria's Pizza before, it was Blue Moon.
That's it. I am in the wrong generation. Sorry, people. Yes, Anna Maria's, Blue Moon, now, yes.
And they did surrender that license upon the closing of the business.
Okay.
So we do have that, that license available to issue.
So it's just going to pass from one to the other?
It's a new license, but it is available.
Okay, that's good. Thank you for filling us in on that. I move the adoption of motion 23-2-1.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing on call the roll.
Ms. Rich?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Think that'll be a nice addition to the downtown, especially for young people. Maybe old people, too, I don't know, we'll have to see. But something with some, some liveliness to it. Item C, discussion decision on the bid award. Would you read that for us, please?
City Council Motion 20-3-2-2, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for contract LM 1-20 Sandy Beach Restaurant and Trailer Number 1A Demolition.
And...
I will move adoption of motion 20-3-2-2.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the item.
I was really surprised at the varying of the bids. That was hard to believe.
Two of the bidders had worked here before, and so we were used to their work, and they were, they were in the 30s. I mean, they were below 30. I think there were three that were below 30. One of them, the one, the actual bid winner has a close relationship with the lawn concrete. So they knew that they could get in and out of Sandy Beach Road relatively easily, and so I imagine that impacted their bid. Now, the, and they're from Sussex.
Sussex, yeah.
The other really high bids were, you know, the Milwaukee area.
Yeah, that's true.
So I, they were within our range, the, most of them were within the range that we anticipated, so I'm, I'm not shocked. It's not, it's not unusual to get a few outliers in a bid. We, we feel very comfortable with the bid.
Who do we have that monitors their progress and any issues? Okay, that's, that's what I thought.
And Rob.
And Rob, okay.
Duane, you know, pretty much wrote the contract, has done all the site visits, did the pre-bid meeting, and wrote the addendum, so he's pretty much up on it, any questions you have, or the analysis of the final bids, but they, they were clean.
Can't think of any questions, so just was making sure that we had somebody on top of it, and I'm assuming there, I can't remember if there was a possibility of asbestos in there, maybe in the tiles, the floor tiles and stuff like that.
There was a, there was a report done on both of the bidders.
Yeah, I think I remember most of it.
And we required the contractor to have a subcontractor that, that was certified to do that type of work.
Okay.
Don't know if it was in the packet, but they did, they did state their, their subcontractor in that case, and I apologize, I don't have it in front of me.
That's okay.
They were required to state who their subcontractor.
It was, yeah.
Will the Highway 89 work have any effect on them coming and going?
So we provided them with a notice and the addendum to all the contractors to, to re-notify them a little more clearly, that they, they will have access, but they need to coordinate with the state contractor, the lawn. Obviously, residents that live along Sandy Beach Road are provided access through this project or through the DOT project. The difference here is if it's all equipment and, and trucks hauling in and out, in and out during the demolition project, that's a little more coordination for the DOT contractor as well. And so we were clear in writing an addendum to kind of clarify that fact.
Steve did say that they have a close relationship with the paving, people that are paving South Main, so.
Yeah, the general contractor for South Main, who they were required to coordinate with, this company has a close, a longstanding relationship with them. So I think, I'm imagining that's why they bid so well.
Okay.
All right, let's call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Rich?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay. Moving on to item D, discussion and decision on the 2020 street and sidewalk maintenance program. Could you, do we have a, read that, please?
City Council Motion 20-3-2-3, approving 2020 street and sidewalk maintenance plan.
Move adoption of motion 20-3-2-3.
Second.
So we pulled some, some roads or streets off of this, from what we had initially thought we were going to do, correct?
I, no, I don't think so. I think you might be thinking of something else. We had looked at some streets last year, but based on last year's plan and the PISA ratings, I think this is pretty consistent with what we thought we would do. Any street that would have been on last year's that looked like it was going to be done this year, probably got pulled because of water and sewer. So like Reed Street, Reed Street was actually a standalone project for sewer.
Right, that's what I was thinking of.
Yeah, and that was, that wasn't under this program, but it was a standalone program under sewer in the capital budget, and there was just so much water work that we just didn't feel comfortable digging up the sewer and repaving pretty much the whole street, and then having to go back relatively soon, because on top of the old water main, every one of the laterals, water service lines was lead. So probably what you're going to see from us is a proposal to move that money that we would have spent at that location and run the manifold from the Tyranidae Road Lift Station near, well, actually from the Tyranidae Park Lift Station to the, to the Tyranidae Park Road Lift Station there in front of Lake Mills Market, so that we start getting that manifold built around the edge. Because what we're noticing is that the most significant issue that we face is, is a wastewater treatment plant system in the distribution area is that Elm Point Road Lift Station. And so getting that manifold constructed will substantially alleviate those problems. We can spend some, some, we can take some of this money, we can also use some impact fee money for that, because that was set aside for that, so we can go ahead and do that project. So probably what you'll note is, is that when we do that project and we award the contract, you're going to be asked to note that there's, and approve the impact fee dollars that will be used on that. But that's not, that's not part of this plan. This plan is basically, and, okay, Duane, go ahead and talk.
So this is a continuation of our street maintenance program, based on work that we've done with, that we've done over a number of probably five, six years now. The budget this year is approximately $500,000 for street maintenance. The, the first part of that is we looked at, and bear with me, I'll pull up a spreadsheet here. We looked at all of the streets that are rated five through eight in the city that have not had any kind of maintenance in the last seven years, and that listing is one of your spreadsheets that you had in the packet today. The top portion of that spreadsheet in general is the Cass and Gladstone, Plainview, Stony Road area that we're proposing under this project, and it's shown green on this map, as chip seal for this year. This project, again, would be on the smaller side of our chip seal program, and when the project is relatively small, we've been working with Jefferson County staff and having contracts go through them. This size of project for chip seal looks like it will be in that range as well this year. We're, we're estimating between 20 and 25,000 for chip seal program this year. You'll note, under that spreadsheet, there were a number of other streets, there were other candidates that fit that criteria. Most of those were located down, down in the, around the park, downtown, Madison Street, East Lake Street. Given all of the work that was done last year, given the unknown of what has hap, what could potentially happen in today, we decided to hold off on any kind of maintenance in that area this year. So you'll note that on the bottom of the spreadsheet at this time, we're not recommending those to be chip sealed at this time. Now, moving on to then, the other portions of the capital improvement plan. The, the next spreadsheet that talks about capital improvement plan shows... This, the next spreadsheet that talks about capital improvement plan shows all of the streets that are less than five, so rated one through four, meaning the worst streets in the city. The listing starts with the capital improvement plan that we've been talking about for a number of years, and it's always a dynamic, uh, document. As of last summer, uh, the top portion of that spreadsheet has a listing and a, and a date, ranging from projects from 2020 all the way through 2000, uh, 2030. Below that, we then start adding other, other streets that we could consider doing some type of maintenance to. And highlighted in yellow is our recommendation for this year's maintenance projects. So, we'll just quickly go over those hopefully here. Uh, go ahead, any questions? Oh, the first one is, uh, first one on the list is Lake Street, Eastlake Street from the bridge to CP Avenue. This is probably was one of the most difficult questions, and as Steve mentioned earlier, as you look through the spreadsheet, most of the projects that are in the first 10-year program are really related to a lot of water main and infrastructure replacement. When we're talking about maintenance or street maintenance, we're trying to do a mill and overlay. We're trying to do a pulverization and replacement, not necessarily looking to completely do all of the utilities. As we continue to do the, this maintenance and our program is now in its fifth or sixth year, we're finding that that list is becoming rather difficult to meet that criteria. So, one of the outliers in this list is, is that Lake Street piece from the bridge to CP Avenue. This is a street that's currently rated about a three. If you've driven it, it's a very highly traveled piece of roadway. The utilities underneath, the water main has had breaks in the past. The sewer, while is not in, in any disrepair, it has, it will be in the long-term the first pipe that will be undersized, but that's long-term. What we're proposing on this one, which is, is that we would, similar to what we did on South Main Street, we did double chip seal to extend the life for the reconstruction that's occurring today. What we're proposing to do is a mill and overlay on this section with the anticipation that nine years from now, that will be a total reconstruct and the water main will be replaced. So, we're looking at a short-term 10-year fix at this time. The other streets that are in the list, uh, that are shown in pink or purple, um, other streets probably have keynote, uh, Owen Street from Reed Street County Trunk Highway V, if you've driven that. It's a rather rough section. That one, we're looking at, uh, fixing some of those joints and then overlaying. It's still a rural section, so raising the road level by adding some overlays is not gonna be a problem because the curb doesn't exist yet. Couple of the projects that we've talked about doing with street staff availability, Griffith, from Griffith dot to Dodge on Aaronside Road. A small 16 and a half foot piece of pavement that's deteriorating, as well as, uh, the short end of Washington Street. Uh, there were some drainage issues and a sump pump issue there, uh, last year that was cleaned up by the property owner. And now, we're gonna look to try and do the maintenance that we didn't do last year because of that. Any questions on those yellow highlighted? That leaves, uh, again, still leaves us a list of 10 or 15 streets down below that are not to be touched this year and not proposed to be touched. And if you look at the bottom of the total, we're looking at, with the 25,000 on the chip seal, we're looking in the range of about 440,000 of that 500,000 dollar budget. Uh, allows us about a 17% contingency to allow us to evaluate what the spring brings us here in the next several months. As you know, we, we tend to review this as we head into August and September and the final portions of the maintenance plan, in case there are any other recommendations that we don't foresee at this time. Schedule would be as if you approve tonight. Uh, we would look to go to the ad on the paper next week. And we would be before you in the first week, first meeting in April with, uh, or the second weekend in April with contracts. Uh, that would put us about a full month ahead of schedule from where we have been the last four years with this program. So, we will, of course, if you approve this and we go to bid, we will, we'll be back in front of you with those bids for approval.
I have a question. Sidewalks that don't need to be replaced, but just need to have that machine go over to even out the, is that part of this kind of thing, or is that considered just general maintenance?
It is part of this, so we did give a spreadsheet on sidewalk, um, in this program. What we try to do is we keep a list, uh, calls that if people see trip hazards, they call the Public Works Office. Uh, we maintain a list as the year goes on. Uh, we look to fix those either by complete replacement or by adding some fill material, um, or by grinding as, as you've spoken.
Yeah, I think the ones I was looking at would've been grinding ones.
But even that grinding, there is a cost associated with that.
Somebody has to do it. Doesn't get done overnight when you wake up in the morning when you come back.
So, we, we evaluate those, uh, as the complaints come in. As we've explained to the Public Works Board, um, this year, it looks like the complaints, usually our complaints are gonna start now, and will ramp up in the next several months. Um, we're already at a list that puts us very close to the budget, um, this early in the season, so. Going to then doing our normal, if there would be additional funds, we do go to a normal counterclockwise rotation around the city. I think we're currently in the northwest, uh, portion of the city at this time.
Do we have a motion on this? Yes, okay. I'm becoming, yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Let's call the roll. Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Fritch?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero. Right, and that moves us on to item E. Discussion and decision on the Jefferson Street reconstruction. Do we have a mo- motion for that? Please read that.
City Council motion 20 dash three dash two dash four, authorizing the city manager to prepare bid documents for the reconstruction of Jefferson Street.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Sorry, I meant the wrong one, hold on a second. It wasn't coming up, uh, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And... My computer's moving very slowly. It's got the 19 virus on. Oh, no, oh, no.
Hope not, yeah, mine was moving really slow.
Well, anyway, um, comments or anything on that?
So, this is...
Jefferson Street.
Yeah, this is using TID three funds.
Yes.
And there is plenty of funds in there to, to make this happen, or?
We have, um, we get about 100,000, a little over 100,000 dollars here in TID number three. We have a, uh, this is about a 560,000 dollar project. So, we could pay it off generally within seven, eight years. The TID's got like 20 some years left, over 20. So, it should more than adequately pay this off and still have funds left over in the long run. This project, uh, came to the top first of all, 'cause it's in TID number three. Last year, we sent a lot of truck traffic this way because, from the construction of the school and South Main Street, because it was a very low-quality street. And conversations with the planner in relationship to the project that you approved earlier for the, um, work at the aggressive metal shop, it became evident that we had the cash flow to handle another project. And, um, this one came to the top. Not only does it replace the street and add sidewalk and curb and gutter, it fixes the water main and does a portion of CP Avenue around the curve. So, probably the main contributor to the TID in this area was, has been Chapter Two. And this does connect to their main truck entrance and, uh, to their employee parking, so it seemed to me to be an appropriate project. We did do the sanitary sewer a couple of years ago. When they built that, uh, second building, not the second phase, but the second building, they did run a new sanitary sewer connection in here, so the sanitary sewer in here is relatively new. And there's only a little bit at the far, um, east end.
But we have to sell bonds?
This, this one does qualify for bonds? So, yes. Some of them, you know, like a lot of stuff this year is projects, but this one is, is actually a bond. And it's a, it's a straight-up GO bond because there's no developer's agreement guaranteeing payment. We already have adequate, um, increment to make the payments.
Is there storm sewer?
There is not, that's part of the street project, and it's not a lot of storm sewer because it's basically gonna drain down the ditch along the old railroad right-of-way. I don't know if you remember the last time we cleaned that out. Um, but, yeah, part of this project will probably be redoing that along the, the old right-of-way out to Rock Creek up there by, behind the canning factory.
So, I'm sorry, this just goes right to Grove.
It doesn't go all the way to Grove. It stops, um, short because a couple of years ago, we did Grove, uh, we did pass Grove. We did, uh, Grove all the way down and then around the curve. And as part of that, we came, I think we came about, past Grove about this far.
Yeah.
And so, the project actually starts right here and runs over to, and then it, as part of the project, it, it turns and goes down CP Avenue always. One of the, one of the issues that, of looking north on CP Avenue is, is, I, the parking lot to Chapter Two and the access to this property here, they both have virtual driveways that run the full width of their property. So, if we go in and do curb and gutter, we're gonna have to change all that. So, at this point in time, I, I wasn't ready to do that. But it, going south, there's already curb on the east side, so adding curb on the west side and redoing the pavement was a benefit. And there, as you can see, there's already sidewalk over here, so bringing the sidewalk along the south side and pulling it out, um, makes a connection. Add some benefit, can make a shorter route to the high school for, for certain people on the east side. The, uh, we didn't put it on the north side because of the drainage issues on the north side. It would take quite a bit of more reconstruction and, and it would get into that stormwater detention basin outlet.
And it'll make a nice little walk downtown from out in Brookstone.
When do you anticipate that starting?
This may be actually in '21.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Why is that?
We don't like bidding this late in the year. I mean, we're just now authorizing the design. And so, you know, it would, um, probably be better for us to wait until the next year, um, to see what happens. It all depends on, um, how the budget starts falling together and those types of things, but, but, um, generally, we, we like to see that now. That being said, you know, we already talked about changing Reed Street to the manifold and that, that we'd wanna bid this year. We may just combine the two and, and run them together to get as big of a bang for the buck.
Better bid.
Yeah. But our initial conversations were waiting until next year just because this wasn't through the normal processes. So, this allows me to do the design now, it doesn't allow me to award the contract. If we bid it, you know, you'd probably see the bid documents. We'd say, these are the bid documents that are going out.
Okay. But I'm glad I asked that question. Anybody else have questions or comments? All right, call the roll. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Fritch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero. Okay, moves us on to item F, which is the discussion decision on Mud Lake Road project, and I'm interested in hearing what you have to say about that.
There's a prepared motion, did you want me to read that title?
Yes, please.
City Council motion 20 dash three dash two dash five, approving the construction plans for the reconstruction of Mud Lake Road, TID number five.
Thank you, sorry, I didn't mean to. I had my little mind on where I was going, so. Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to approve, motion 20 dash three dash two dash five.
Second.
Thank you, now we can discuss it. The reason I was interest, you know, particularly interested is I've had a lot of people from Mud Lake Road ask me about it, so, I hope good I can get all my answers tonight, so.
Obviously, we've been working with the developer down there and approving Tyranidae Point Road and, so that's why TID five was more critical than TID number eight, as we've already discussed. Brandon has prepared the bid documents and, uh, we're trying to stay on a timeline consistent with what the developer wanted to see for his construction. The, so we're, I think we're prepared to send these.
It advertises on Thursday.
It advertises on Thursday.
But we can always, you know, not do that if you guys don't approve it. We're just trying to be prepared, you know, just 'cause there's an ad in the paper doesn't mean you actually have to bid it, so.
But that's what we're trying to do. We, we've been trying to keep on that schedule as tight as possible. Some of it has to do with the fact that we're using a lot of fill material in the roadway to bring the road up on the north end, 'cause it takes a big drop and then goes down. And so, it saves, we don't have to put in a lift station if we can fill that road. And where do you think we're getting the fill from? South Main Street.
That's what I was thinking.
So, while they're digging South Main Street, we're trying to get that dirt and move it to Mud Lake Road. So, and, and then to top it off, the same contractor who's doing the one project is likely to give us a great bid on the next project because they can handle those two projects together and the moving of the dirt and all that.
Save a lot of mobilization costs, too.
Save a lot of mobilization costs. So, we've been, we've been pushing this pretty hard, um, for that reason.
What is the, um, how many feet is the road gonna be raised?
That's a Brandon or Dwayne.
Uh, the most is about eight feet. Probably on average is more like four feet. On the south end, it'll be about the same as where the road is now. Uh, there's a low spot kinda right across from the, the Topol Barn that's kind of at the tip of, uh, A and Mud Lake Road there. Um, that's the area where it'll be about eight feet of fill. So, the road really kinda dips down there right now.
So, with that road being raised, that will help deal with the water issues coming down the hill?
The road is being raised primarily for sanitary sewer.
Right.
We're tying into the sanitary sewer on south, at the end of South Main Street project. And so, in order to keep that sanitary sewer buried at appropriate depth, you needed to raise the road. And it will also help with some of the water that...
Because some people were concerned with the water. I don't know if it was going across Mudway, Lake Road. Because some people were concerned with the water. I don't know if it was going across Mudway, Lake Road and into the field across the street?
Yes. Historically, there were, there's actually a culvert there for it to back up through, but it, I'm sure it runs straight down that hill and across the road if it can during heavy rains, which we've had a lot of recently. The, the design has obviously curb and gutter and storm inlets and the water actually all runs to the, the detention basin at the north end of the project. And then once that hits the hundred year flood, then it starts bagging up into the system and there's an overflow that allows it to flow through the pipes out back onto the site to the south of the Topol Barns. So we, we talked to Trent about that quite a bit after the Public Works Board meeting. And so yes, the stormwater will be handled significantly better. It's a, it's a difficult project in that there's no real high quality outlet. But as far as, as being well designed, it's well, it's overdesigned for what our normal requirements would be. Coming out of it, Dwayne and Brandon and I felt pretty comfortable with scope of the design. And that what, and the resulting water flow and the long-term ability to handle that water even as we continue to develop more to the west.
And what's the timeline? When, when are you hoping to get started on that road? That part?
Well, if we were to advertise on Thursday, we would have a two week window for the contractors to put their bids together. So we would receive bids in early April. And then hopefully bring it to you for a bid award that first meeting in April, the regularly scheduled meeting. It would be beneficial, I think, for everybody as we've been talking about with the interaction with the eighty-nine project to have a contractor be able to start working there as soon as possible. Because the eighty-nine project, they're going to start laying water main next week. And so that we would like to take any sort of fill coming out of utility trenches or road grading, which they're going to do right behind the underground utility installations to be able to come to this project. So anyways, it would be April, early April, hopefully we'd be able to award the contract. Contractor could get onsite, you know, if it's, if it's somebody who's already here, it could be real soon, a couple of days after the award, but.
Yeah, because otherwise you won't be able to get that ground you're trying to get from the other part of the project because they're going to say, get it out of here and you have to take it someplace.
Right. And it's going to be more expensive for them to truck it someplace farther away and more expensive for us to truck new stuff in from someplace farther away, so.
Okay, I get it. I mean, I know some of the people involved or not involved, but affected by this are watching tonight on television. So that's why I wanted to know that. So it'll be sooner than later if we can.
Correct, yeah. Hoping there'll be a contractor on site by early May would be my hope at the, at the latest.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
Call the roll please. Ms. Rich?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion pass four zero.
Item G, resolution twenty ten. You have a motion to read on that one as well? Let's see. Council resolution twenty ten. Please read that for us.
Resolution twenty dash ten, approving intergovernmental cooperation agreement to establish the fire department shared services agreement with Watertown and Johnson Creek.
Do I have a motion?
I move adoption of resolution twenty ten.
Second. It has to be you, otherwise we.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second we have.
So I was trying to understand some of it. A lot of it set it geared towards support or part of with Johnson Creek is Johnson Creek disbanding stuff or am I reading something wrong or what, what am I?
Missing.
What am I missing? Is this just everybody going to give support to everybody? But it just sounded like Johnson Creek was in dire need of support is what I read in everything that was in my packet.
Currently, that is a, a true statement. Johnson's Creek Fire EMS has a staffing problem and needs help. But it, the, the agreement goes much further than that. We all need help during certain times of a day or, or the week and the, our main focus when we, when we came together for this agreement was to address those shortfalls during the day when we're all shorthanded for fire calls. And this, this agreement talks about auto aid, which is different from mutual aid. So if there's a fire in Lake Mills, Johnson's Creek and Watertown are being dispatched at the same time as Lake Mills. So we will get resources here faster than what we would if we were to call mutual aid. And the, the benefit for all of us with an auto aid agreement is when ISO comes in to rate our fire departments or our service because it's, it's much more than just what we as a fire department can do. It looks at dispatch, our water department and and our equipment and our training and so forth. Auto aid gives us credit where mutual aid doesn't. So that would be a benefit for all of our communities.
And we obviously aren't able to bring the EMS portion in because it's
Not ours.
Not ours. Looking at risks. What are, what is our risk profile if we go to that to aid of say Johnson Creek or Watertown? And then we have something happen here at the same time? I mean, is there?
Well, if, if, if we go any place at any time, whether it's under this agreement or current mutual aid agreement. We backfill our community with somebody else. So, you know, under Mavis, the policy is you keep eighty, eighty percent of your resources in your community and you only send twenty. So you always have coverage. So when if you agree to this agreement, the three chiefs have to redevelop our mutual aid box alarm system cards to reflect the auto aid. Because there, there will be change with our much bigger picture, which is the mutual aid box alarm system.
Why is there the big push with this now? I know when we talked last month at our meeting, you said to incorporate EMS with this would make it go much easier. I guess why is it split up now and I thought we were looking at going, kind of combining them to, in the agreement?
I guess, I don't, if, are you talking with Lake Mills EMS and Lake Mills Fire?
Lake Mills EMS and Lake Mills Fire are working on this agreement in a combination.
We started this, when I say we, there were four chiefs. Jefferson was included. They stepped out for reasons that, that they have. And I don't you know, manage, supervise Lake Mills EMS. I'm doing what I feel is needed to provide the best protection to our citizens when it comes to fire. Now, the other two agencies, Johnson's Creek and Watertown, in the agreement, there's talk about EMS and paramedics and all that. That's between them. I'm not a player. Lake Mills is not a player in that. And, and you know, this is, this, this agreement here, again, it started with four departments. We felt that there was a need, a recognized need, that something needed to be done to help our communities out. We started this before Jefferson County contracted, was it Wisconsin Policy Forum? To do a study countywide for shared services, including fire EMS. There have since been separate studies that are looking at those shared services. So now if something develops with a much bigger agreement, we'll most likely be a part of that and this would dissolve.
When you talk about shared equipment in here and resources, is there, I mean, are they looking at buying a truck or something or specific equipment where there's reimbursement in there? Or how would that work?
No, that's, if they have an event going on or we have an event, we need staffing, we need equipment, we can utilize them as part of the agreement. And I think to go back to Mr. Foster's question earlier, the three departments, the three agencies, communities do not lose their individual identity. We are still the Lake Mills Fire Department, Watertown, Johnson's Creek, but we will have shared standard operating guidelines, policies and procedures as far as how we will operate and function at a, an emergency scene. We will have a shared and joint training plan. So we are all training the same. So when we do show up at a scene, we know what each department will be doing and how it's going to be done.
So I'm assuming all that work is on the each individual chief's shoulders to make sure that everything is matching and.
Yes, and that's in this, the document here from our, our last meeting as far as our priorities and, and what we need to get accomplished.
It sounds like under this agreement, if you're short staffed, you aren't showing up at the fire and then realizing that it's bigger than what you anticipated. And then you ask for mutual aid. This saves time. It gets the resources and the personnel there right away.
That is correct.
And so I, I can see where that's a, a big plus to our community because during the daytime, you're kind of short.
Yep. We all are. You know, even Watertown is as big as they are. So.
The agreement from a fire department perspective is good. We also share the same medical director across board, which is the same one that or medical policies. I think they actually all use Aurora. But we've all come to an agreement that we're sharing the same medical policies. The, so you know, Dave wanted to go in and sit down with them and negotiate that deal. I, I don't have any, I don't think there was any reason that that couldn't be done. I I know that they were looking at the three chiefs, fire chiefs and, and we told them we don't do EMS and they were like, okay, well, we'll hammer this out. And they did. But if, I, I don't know if that would be a separate agreement or if you get included in this one. I, I don't know. That's, that's something that you Jeff Romer, who is the current acting fire chief in Johnson Creek, is a consultant who does these types of intergovernmental agreements. For RW management?
RW management, but he's sold out to some other outfit now.
Yeah. They always do.
Yeah, I just think that may be a little difficult to incorporate ours into the one that's already part of the fire department. I just, I, I'm not sure if, I mean, it could probably be done, but obviously ours is a, I don't want to say for profit, but they're, they make money off the calls and I'm not sure how the one for like Johnson Creek or Watertown, if they're part of the fire department, I'm not sure how they reimburse or what they do, if it's totally different or.
I know that Johnson Creek bills.
No bill.
I don't know about Watertown, but at Johnson Creek, they, they definitely are, are trying to cut as much of the cost off of the EMS service as possible. So I don't, I don't know that that's an issue. What I'm looking at is they need to sit down and the two that are looking at sharing mutual EMS need to sit down with Lake Mills EMS because they're a separate entity from us. They have a separate board. They do those things. We couldn't negotiate for them or or do those types of things. I don't, I don't know that we would.
Yeah, I don't even think that would come.
From a fire perspective, this benefits us. Yeah, from a fire perspective, this benefits us.
Yeah.
We've, you know, we've, you know, sat down and negotiated with Lake Mills EMS and tried to come up with some.
Can you share some of the concerns with Watertown? Because it says the chief here is willing to move forward to implement this agreement, but not with a formal agreement, written agreement? Must have some concerns or they, they feel they need some more information on his letter here.
They were running it back through the board for some more information. And I don't have the same concerns that they do. They have union issues. And so it makes it a more significant issue for them to be able to finalize the contract. So I don't have the same concerns that they do. Some of the concerns are recently and like Todd mentioned, Johnson Creek has been calling Watertown a lot. And so the perspective is, is, but it's more EMS than it is fire. So from our perspective, it isn't as big of a deal as it is for Watertown, particularly in relationship to their union requirements. So from our standpoint, no, it's not as substantial, but we're not, we're not going to finalize until all three do.
There was a meeting scheduled for
Monday.
The afternoon, but it was canceled due to all the virus concerns, but this city manager, mayors and village administrator and the, the three fire chiefs were scheduled to meet to go, to address some of the current, the concerns that Watertown had, but that'll be rescheduled.
I only have one, one recommendation, being take back to the chiefs on their letterhead. They might want to turn the Watertown one around. It's backwards.
You mean backwards?
Their logo. Can't see it?
Can't see that.
Their logo's backwards. It's actually upside down and backwards.
Yeah, just.
Ah, just something I noticed, so. I just thought it was kind of funny that they were upside down and backwards. And they're the ones that are having issues with signing it.
They, they also have, you know, they, they've had requests, they, they've been running to Lebanon almost nonstop. They get a lot of crossover into Dodge County with, I know Reese Phil's asked them to cover their territory. So it's a, it's a broader spectrum from them than it is for us. We, we tend to be more related to here and, and fire and so it, it's not as big of an issue for us. They, if they sign agreements, they got EMS, they're running all over the place, then that's like, who's in Watertown?
Yours is right, huh? Yeah, I, I think this could be a good thing for everybody involved right now, especially since we've had staffing problems and.
And I think this is only the beginning.
Yeah.
We, we as fire chiefs have to start thinking outside the box to provide the highest level of service at a reasonable, you know,
Yeah, cost to the citizens, yeah.
Because it's, it, things aren't going to get better for us. So, you know, we'll have to look at, you know, manpower and. So, you know, we'll, we'll have to look at, you know, manpower and, and, you know, how we can possibly come up with shifts or share, you know, people at certain times, so.
Yeah, the only thing I think that we should keep track of is as we start doing these calls and we start running to these other calls, if this gets fully approved, is keep track of fuel costs to see if, how much that spikes over the year. I don't know if it will or not, but that's one thing I can see happening. That and maybe some maintenance on the vehicles.
Well, and, and when we, if you look at the, the first page there where, where it lays out the response, responses as far as location and, and what we're taking, I purposely did not want to offer our ladder truck. You know, it's, it's old and I don't wanna, you know, use it any more than I have to. And it's not a, a vehicle that travels well on County Highway eight going to Watertown in a hurry. So I just told them that when we come or go to Watertown or, or to Johnson's Creek, we'll come with an engine company. And the same when they're coming here, Johnson's Creek's coming with their ladder truck, Watertown's coming with an engine company again, just because of the county highway roads.
I don't think that the gas is gonna change much though, because we're already in Mavis. We're just responding later.
So. Yeah, you're right, yeah.
This is, this is a faster response. It's all the way around. So we're, they're coming here, we're going there. We're already doing it anyways. I mean, a couple of years ago when we had, well, how many years ago when that railroad car fell over? And our guys did a lot of the work on that. And when they had the big tire fire up there, we, we're still responding. It's just how fast.
Yeah, and I don't know those numbers. I just didn't know if we responded to almost every one of them or if there's gonna be more that we're gonna hit because of this now where we wouldn't get the Mavis call before if they didn't need us.
No, that, that is something that we have to work out with, with the chiefs. At, at what point does dispatch do the auto aid? Because if it's a, an alarm, we're not gonna activate and have communities come rushing in. Again, because it costs every community money to, to roll the rig. But now if it comes in and there's smoke reported, you know, flames showing, yeah, it's gonna be activated and, and we're gonna roll. But we have to come up with whatever that criteria is going to be. So dispatch knows this is when the auto aid goes into effect.
That'll all be part of your policies, so. You guys got that?
Well, I think we're okay, huh?
Beat that one to death.
Well, it's better to ask your questions.
Thanks, Todd.
Anything else from anybody else? Call the roll please.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion pass four zero.
Thank you for coming tonight. So that takes us to item H, ordinance one-two-one-one. Would you, now, this is the third reading for this. This is our change in our staffing. So what do we do for third reading?
Title. Ordinance twelve-eleven, amending chapter one-fifty-three, officers, employees and adding article five, neighborhood service officer, section one-fifty-three dash nine, delegation of authority, issuance of citations and corrective orders.
I move adoption of ordinance one-two-one-one.
Second.
Any discussion? I think we pretty much beat that one to death over the time too. Call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion pass four zero.
Okay. Moving on to item I, ordinance twelve-twelve, second reading. Do what you do for second reading.
Ordinance twelve-twelve, amending city of Lake Mills ordinance section six-sixty dash forty-four, official zoning map, city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number two-four-six-zero-seven-one-three-two-four-two-three-zero-zero-three. Owner CNS Unstrust, tearing a point subdivision.
Okay, did we have any changes since our last reading? Dan, anything? No? Okay.
We'd like, they'd like this to be moved to the third reading.
Okay, and it might be safer to do that too in case we don't have a meeting. I mean.
The last time you held this up because of some issues related to the construction plans.
And those are?
We have resolved the water one. Dwayne and Dan are working out the exact wording on the developers agreement. It'll be tied into that. We haven't finalized the pub, the construction plans, but they, we've already notified them that they have to follow right down the municipal code, so. And they've agreed to that, they haven't, they haven't held anything up there.
So we're good to go.
We're good to go.
I move that we suspend our rules and go to the third reading.
Second.
Call the roll on that.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion pass four zero.
Okay, so that leaves us now to being in the third reading. So you have to do a third reading? Read the title again, right?
Ordinance twelve-twelve, amending city of Lake Mills ordinance section six-sixty dash forty-four, official zoning map, city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number two-four-six-zero-seven-one-three-two-four-two-three-zero-zero-three. Owner CNS Unstrust, tearing a point subdivision.
Okay, so this is our third reading. It sounds like we've got everything covered that we need. Call the roll. I need a motion.
Need a motion.
Oh, we didn't have a motion.
Not yet.
Thank you.
I will move adoption of ordinance twelve-twelve.
Second.
Thank you. Jumping the gun here. All right, now is there any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Ms. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion pass four zero.
Okay, so that gives you your third reading. And that helps with that, right? Recommendations for future agendas at this time?
We already talked about the archaeological report, that'll be on the agenda. Tid number five will be on the agenda, I think. Is there anything else we have coming forward?
Public hearing for the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan.
Would you repeat that? I couldn't hear you.
The public hearing for the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan.
Okay.
Yeah, then the contracts for Mud Lake. Cause those bids will be in and.
Okay, so seeing those items and future agendas and seeing nothing else coming before me, meeting adjourned.